I'd like to welcome everyone back to the school committee meeting of January 23rd, 2024. I thank you for your patience. If everyone could please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Gary, I'd love you to read the mission and vision.
Thank you. The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you very much. In accordance to the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If there's any member of the public that would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising your hand either in person or remote. Please state your name and purpose for recording. Additionally, all participants are reminded to mute their microphones when not speaking to minimize background noise and ensure clear recording. Is anyone, I see you, Gilda. I'm sorry, what's your name?
Jackie Jepson.
Jackie Jepson. All right. Okay.
Just the awards.
Of course. Of course. Of course, no problem. Student Advisory. Do we have anyone from Student Advisory? We do not tonight. Okay, moving on to public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to open meeting law, the com- excuse me, the committee cannot act on public comment. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments and feedback, may accept comments, and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12 MA.us. If anybody would like to speak for public comment, I would love for you to sit up front here so that our owls can capture you. Thank you.
Is my name included in my two minutes? No. Tammy Enman, mother of four, owner of Little Kids Preschool in North Falmouth.
Thank you.
Going off the recent attack, or should I say assault, that occurred on December 18th at FHS, I would like the parents, teachers, and community members of Falmouth to know that this isn't just happening in our high school. This is happening in every school in Falmouth, schools across our state, and sadly, across our entire nation. Children are subject to bullying, both physical and verbal, every single day. With practices put in place to so-called teach us about combating hate and division, we are somehow more divided than ever before. We have more bullying and more discipline issues than ever before. It's almost as if our youth doesn't know right from wrong, or they just don't care because there's no consequences to their actions. What is going on? Where have we gone wrong? We're no longer a society who stands up for our beliefs, protects our fellow citizens, and one which stands up against hate. Why do the majority of people, even when hateful acts are committed right in front of them, choose to stay silent, or better yet, pull out a phone and record it instead of intervening? Is it fear? Is it ignorance? Social media? I can't accept any of it. At Little Kids, we teach every child to be kind, accepting of others, respectful of adults and peers, and to always stand up for themselves. Why is it that myself and my staff can effectively work with families and children as young as two and three years old, holding them accountable for their actions should they do wrong, yet our public schools can't? We teach them simple lessons like sharing, comforting a friend they have hurt, not leaving kids out, saying sorry, and so on. Children need and want guidance, rules, and discipline. Without it, they cannot become effective members of society. I have learned this through watching my husband coach basketball for the past three years. He is hard on his boys, including our son, and they absolutely love him for it. They are different kids with different families, different stories, and different backgrounds, yet they have one goal: to be great. They are succeeding at this because my husband is pushing them to be better, holds them accountable, and is teaching them that in order to be successful, they must work as a team. They always have each other's backs, and if they mess up off the court, they know that it will not be tolerated. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to see that whatever we are doing isn't working. We must make changes now. This past Sunday, a 15-foot swastika was carved out on the snow on a local pond. People skated there all day, and no one did a thing. This is a disgusting act of hate. If, in fact, the person who did this is a student at FHS, I propose that they take a day-long class on the Holocaust, watch the footage of the horrors that took place, write a public apology to every Jewish family in Falmouth, including my own, and be removed from any sport team that they are on effective immediately.
Anyone else for public comment? All right. Seeing none. I'd like to move on to the presentation of the high school highlights.
Yeah, so we have some teachers and students that will come up front from the high school.
Thank you.
It's okay. It's all right. Welcome this evening. My name's Caitlin Hackett. I'm the culinary teacher here at the high school. This is Karen Donahoe, life skills teacher. The treats and coffee that you received as you walked in this evening were prepared by the students in the culinary program and served by Ms. Donahoe's life skills students. Several years ago at this point, members of the CTE Culinary Program Advisory advocated that our culinary program should include a new course which allows students to apply their culinary and baking knowledge and skills into an industry-mirrored environment. Dr. Dur supported the creation of this new capstone course to the culinary pathway called Restaurant Management. Students wish to create the Clipper Cafe, which is our small coffee shop, where they select and cost out recipes, establish menu prices, and prepare and sell coffee and breakfast treats to faculty and staff during the first period of the school day. The students in the culinary program are advancing their management skills, while the students in Ms. Donahoe's life skills class are also advancing their social skills and their workforce skills. All have benefited from this collaboration, and I think you got to see that this evening as you walked in. Now, the students who complete the culinary pathway earn four industry-recognized certificates. Those include the Massachusetts Allergen Awareness Certificate and the following serve-safe certificates: the Food Handler Certificate, which is valid for three years from the time they complete the exam, and then Understanding Unconscious Bias Certificate and the Preventing Sexual Harassment in the Industry Certificate, both which are credentials that are valuable regardless of which field they pursue after high school. Okay? The students, Ms. Donahoe and I, are excited to grow this program. We plan to do this in upcoming semesters by purchasing a point-of-sale system that provides students practice with systems similar to what they would see in the industry. We also have our students in Restaurant Management working with the students in the Business Marketing Program. This past semester, they surveyed the student body and staff to gather data about product preferences, which will help us expand our menu offerings and hopefully increase our sales. Another student-led group called Grub, which has also just established this past semester, it consists of students from the Culinary Program and the Food Justice Initiative Program. Those students are investigating ways that the culinary program can offer their products to the student body. This has been a great learning experience for all of our students, and I want to thank Dr. Harris and Dr. Dur for being so supportive of this program. We hope you enjoyed your treats.
Just a snippet of what the TLC, the skill level program, students use their skills that they learned during their life skills class, and that is instructed, taught by myself, the classroom teacher, our occupational therapist, our speech and language pathologist. And we have a pre-vocational curriculum and a social skills curriculum. We use those skills in the Clipper Cafe, and it is authentic, it is genuine, and it is very little adult support, it's very child-driven and led. Did you still want to share some words? You behave as ourselves.
And before you go, I just want to thank you for your partnership because this is so meaningful for our students. And so, both of you do such a great job. I also want to share a little bit about the culinary program. It's a lot of fun. You have at your seats an article that Sarah Murphy just completed on the culinary program, so you can learn a lot more there. But just recently, Ms. Hackett did a bake-off, and so I got to be one of the judges. And you'll learn in the article that another one of the judges was a 2019 Falmouth High School graduate, went on to graduate from Johnson &amp; Wells, and is now working at Pie in the Sky. She makes the croissants, so as you're enjoying those delicious croissants, that is a Falmouth High School graduate. We're so excited. But the day I was judging, if, I don't know how you decide, every one of the desserts were so professional. I mean, they put it down, this is something you would go into a restaurant, you would order, and it would come. But if you can see the cupcakes, they're just going to read, these are the winners. This is strawberry crunch cupcakes. It was a dessert, I love how they wrote about it. It's a sweet, rich, pink vanilla cupcake filled with a tart strawberry compote and iced with a fluffy cream cheese frosting. On top of the cupcakes, you will see a buttery, crunchy crumble made with golden Oreos and freeze-dried strawberries and garnished with the remaining refreshing mint leaf. Is that not beautiful? I mean, is that not all coming together, right? How it was written, it was just a piece of art. It was just beautiful. So they did, and it's so much fun to participate. Thank you for giving our students opportunities. It's like being on a, you know, the TV, but the real bake-off show. You get to see them like rushing at the end, she has them under a timer, and then they have to have it presented to the judges, and they have to speak to it. And it's just, it's amazing opportunities, and so thank you. This partnership, I can't say enough about.
My eyesight's failing me a little bit, but would you introduce the students by their first name? That'd be great.
They can introduce themselves once you know.
Okay.
I have Beef.
Thank you.
I have Beef and Kenny.
You have one of the servers? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a new.
Hi.
I'm Jeffrey.
Hi. You guys did a great job.
Yep. Thank you.
She was awesome.
Thank you.
If I may.
Please.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'd like to make a couple of statements here before we move on with the presentation. And Dr. Harris, would you join me at the table, please? We kind of want to share a little bit. I will tell you, this year, the administrators and staff have been focused on the words that hurt. And those are, you know, slurs, but it's also the symbols that hurt us as well. And it's, you know, that negative impact that it has on students. But I will say, our students, I am so proud of our students that they're bringing the incidents like this to the administrators. They're reporting it, they're saying something about it, and it gives us an opportunity, even though we certainly, you know, do not want these incidents to ever happen. But it does give an opportunity for us to have discussions and for the students to bring, you know, to start the conversations that we need to have, the awareness, the teaching, opportunities that, you know, that we really need to, we need to focus on kindness and love and not hate. And so, you know, whether it happens off-campus, whether it happens on-campus, you know, whether our students are involved or not involved, we still have a responsibility as a community. And this is a community issue, it's not just a school issue. And I really, we have the No Place for Hate Falmouth, which are absolutely wonderful people that spend their time trying to work on these type of issues. Henry has started the ambassadors group that has community members and school members. We talk, we have discussions, we're trying to figure out ways that we can, you know, make our Falmouth our beloved community. Right? This is, we need more. We need the entire community to come together and to eliminate hate. And we have to speak out, and we have to show how building friendships and building connections are what's going to get us there. And so, I just, I just want to kind of, you know, a call to action to everybody. Like, we need to stop this in our community. And I'm just turning it over, I don't know if you want to add anything there.
I mean, one, gosh, you get into this business to create a safe space for learning for kids, and when that happens in your school, that a student wasn't safe and a student is hurt, you feel like you failed, and you do want to apologize deeply to the parents that they felt that hurt, and you apologize that that happened within the community, and then you work to think about, how do we get better? How do we work to be better as a system, and then better as a school, and better in developing? Yes, we need to address and hold students accountable. It says, I've been here as principal, the support from the superintendent forward about holding students to the highest level of accountability has been there. And we work every time we find out that there has been hate speech that is written or symbolism that has been there. Our team works tirelessly to investigate it and to get to the bottom of it where we can. More importantly, and I think a lot of credit belongs to the people here long before me, Mr. St. Julian and Ms. Gans and Ms. O'Brien, who've been working on building the capacity through students and Clippers for change and beginning to advocate that if you see the inward written, you have a responsibility, no matter the color of your skin or who you are, to tell somebody that it's there and get rid of it. Not to only tell someone who's black that it was there, but to be an advocate that says, this doesn't belong here. And I think that was awful what was there on Sunday, and we have an obligation to find out how we did it. I am proud that it is a Falmouth student who brought it forward. That said, this was there, and it needs to not. And we want to let you know because someone needs to do something about it, and we will work to do that. But the more we see our students as the proactive advocates, no matter who they are, represent, that says, if you see or hear hate, that means there's either ignorance or there's hate, and we can't have either one. We're going to educate you, or we're going to let you know that that is not allowed. But that is a tireless, ongoing effort, and I think we have growing to do. Sometimes, the growing is when our students are starting to tell and see us, we've seen this, and we expect it to get better. And words are words, actions are going to affect. I think there's been a lot of work at the level of student to teacher to really try and have this advocacy, and we'll work tirelessly to get there. But there are systems we're working on in place, and I think on all levels as a school, we've tried to, over the last 18 months, each time, try and incrementally be clear about high expectations and accountability when you don't get there, teaching when you're lagging, but most importantly, a community who says we can expect more.
So while you're here.
Yeah.
If we could also, I'd like to address the school committee. There was a question that came up in our last meeting about, you know, how do we review any incident? So in general, if you could speak from the high school, which is very similar at all of our schools, what do we do after an event that happens to evaluate and for that continuous improvement? If you can share that.
I mean, first, just in terms of our systemic work every day as a school to try and work for the assurance of safety for our students every single day. At 6:30 in the morning, Larry Warner is setting cones outside and on the radio letting people know he's prepping for both drop-off on the outside, and Michelle Drew is at that corner watching and securing where the buses come in, and at 7:09, there's literally a radio call that says the students are coming. And every one of our staff are at a door to be able to look and see who's coming into our building. Like, it starts there, and it goes with our security staff checking the doors daily and every single period monitoring that, and at the last call, there's a call to Michelle Drew that the buses are ready and we clear. And that is daily, included in that daily, is a 1:30 meeting that happens in my office every day with my assistant principals, our school special education building administrator, and our SRO. And we, every day, go over what happened in the day. Sometimes, it's just checking out if something may be happening. Sometimes, it's an incident that happened related to either someone was hurt or a bigger incident. That requires a more full review. So that review then happens with our team on the following day to get at several different aspects, both what are we doing in that incident with the students, and how are we followed up on that? But also, where are there areas where there may have been errors, or there needs to be corrections in a system, but also personnel? If it's personnel, we handle it in a private way, working with that, holding people accountable. It happens internally, staff-wise, to help people either get educated or be addressed on errors that they may have made personnel-wise. From a system standpoint, we say, where can we get better and what were gaps in our system in ways in which we can improve? An example would be, as part of this review was a thought, was we didn't have a substitute in that class that day. We had one of our teachers in the class that day, but if we had had a substitute, did we have the right protocols for subs in their book that they get in the day? We realized in that we were lacking for our subs a protocol on how you would send students to the nurse if something happened in your room when you were substituting. So we add that in. That's one example, right? We review the communication protocols, how we communicate with both the student, the family that was, had assumed you'd moved in, the victim, and the student who had discipline. Are there areas that we can improve in those regards? Each time we review, particularly in this day and age, our protocols related to what happens with any electronic recording. That applies not only to a student who may have recorded it, but also those pieces often have a tail. So we will end up having an incident that happened, a student has it, a week later, someone may have found something, even though we had pulled it. We have the ability, and we follow up. Our assistant principals are diligent at continuing to follow up with students and let them know that a sharing of that information in any regard would result in consequences for the student who shared it, whether you took it or not. And we reiterate, and we go through those pieces. From those pieces, after we do that review, on our staff meetings every month, we have safety at the top of the agenda. If there's something that we updated from anything that happened in that month, we would go over that with the staff as a whole. If there's something that was more urgent, I would put that in my Thursday. I do a weekly communication to all of my staff. So that weekly communication would get anything that would be updated on a more timely basis before they would get it at a staff meeting. And we do that iteratively and ongoing on every single incident to try and learn how can we get better? How can we improve the system of safety within this building? Our communication with parents, again, that doesn't help a parent who thought their kid was safe at school and they got hurt. And we have to work that that doesn't happen, but also be better at how we communicate when it does and follow up with it. We're sincerely grateful to parents who do come straight to us and say, you can be better, and here's how. And we take that seriously, and then we follow through with it.
So one of the opportunities here that we took was the nurse protocol. And so, we looked at it, we realized we had a protocol, but we may not have had it in an easy-to-read format. And so, under the direction of Dr. Woodward, the nurses and Dr. Parkinson had created this document that now will be in those subfolders, which will be in the room of every teacher. And you can see how they worked to design it. But this is, if an incident happens, you have in the green, which would be non-urgent, in the yellow, urgent, and then the red, emergent. And you can see there's a code at the top, and pretty much follows through alphabetical order, any type of situation where nurses may be needed. So if it's a non-urgent, you can send the individual to the nurse by themselves. If it's urgent, someone should escort a student to the nurse or another staff member to the nurse. And then if it's emergent, the nurse is called to the incident. And so, it's kind of laid out. So this was an opportunity, an area of growth, that we figured we needed something that is kind of a go-to and so everyone can have the same understanding and consistency of practice. So this is just an area where we made some improvements. Wanted to share that with you, and thank you, Dr. Woodward, our nurses, and Dr. Parkinson for helping to create this.
You know, I want to say that any action is unacceptable. Words and symbols are just unacceptable. And as it was said, we do live in a divided environment. And I think it's important to continue this process. But we need to remember, it is a process, it doesn't happen overnight. As we take steps to improve, improvement always occurs. And I thank you for all the steps you've taken for letting us know what the process is, and I think it's important that we continue on this track forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. As a former SRO and as a former supervisor of a team of SROs at a high school of over 4,000 kids, I know that there's a lot of concern about police officers in schools and what their role is and so forth. And we always made sure that there was training with the staff so that they would understand that the SRO is not there for school discipline, but they would be called in when it goes beyond an instance of school discipline. So the first part of my question is, do you feel that that training is in place where your staff has been given the proper training in understanding the role of the SRO, that they're not to be involved in school discipline, but they are to be involved when it becomes a criminal matter?
Similar to you, I too worked in high schools, greater than 32,000 to 3,200 students, and worked with multiple staff and SROs. I offer that in the sense that this is the best-trained staff and the best-trained SRO in that regard in understanding those components, even more so, the rapport with which our SRO has in connecting with our students and our broader community is really second to none. I mean, I think, and I would feel like from my experience, this is the highest level of efficiency in that particular regard that I've seen in any school I've been in.
So the second part to my question, I guess, is then, what do you feel is that trigger, is that line where it goes from a matter of school discipline to a matter of involving, immediately involving either the SRO or if they're not available in the building, a call to the police department for their immediate response?
Are you asking me for a specific, what are you asking?
Not, not, it doesn't have to be a specific, but I guess, is there, is there something, is there like this, where there's a protocol for the nurses? Is there, is there a trigger? Is there a certain criteria that you have in place that says, okay, this is school discipline? This is a call to the police department?
From my perspective, this is a big reason why we have an SRO here, right? Right. Is our staff aren't having to make a determination, is this 911? We have SRO here and available, as we would work through. He has our radio, we're in radio communication, we're responding. I think that's my piece is, it's why we do a daily at 1:30, to specifically be able to talk through, types of things that you're talking about can vary, right? And so, how do we have that rapport and know that we're in dialogue about that? First and foremost, are people confident that they can respond to assure student safety? That I feel like our staff and our SRO are on the same page about, sir?
Thank you.
Sorry if I didn't answer your question then.
Anyone have other questions, comments? I just want to make a comment about, thank you, Dr. Harris and Dr. Dur for your update and for your update on the questions that we had at our last meeting. and for your update on the questions that we had at our last meeting for reminding people that there is no place for hate. But I just want to just call to action, we can be better. We can do better. And bad behavior is bad behavior. So be better, hell, better. Seriously, we're not those people. So, thank you.
Next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Presentation on celebrating Cabral.
Yes.
Yes, please, thank you.
So I'm so excited. We have some of our friends and partners here with us today. And so if we can all kind of move up front, I think. So we do have a presentation tonight on Emile Cabral. And so I'm going to introduce some several people that's going to be a part of this presentation. So you know, we talked over time about our partnership with the Cape Verdean Museum and Cultural Center and our partnership with Barbara Berga, which is, you know, we've done such great work. We are, you know, all of our second graders get to go to the museum. It's just, it's a wonderful thing as they learn so much about the Cape Verde culture and especially the Tatarugas. But so, you know, so that relationship we have, we have been building. We do after-school activities with our children. You know, we've talked about the sister school and our partnership with Bridgewater State. And thank you, Angelo Barbosa, for being here with us. And we're continuing to grow that, right? So these are a lot of our connections. And this year, when we learned, this was the year of Cabral. And Barbara shared so much information. We were able to connect with Dr. Mindy at the province...
Rhode Island.
Yes, the Rhode Island College in Providence. And we were able to have conversations and we learned so much. And it was just such a, like, we have to do something. This person is such a great leader. And I'm not going to give away anything because Angelo in a few minutes is going to tell us all about Mr. Cabral. And we're excited to hear that. So I won't give much. But when we say this is the year of Cabral, he turned 90, he would have turned 99 in September. And so this year, leading up to his 100th birthday at next fall in September, being able to do, just really introducing Cabral to our students, having a contest, which we'll hear and have some students up here again, which is always exciting. But I want, at this point, to turn over to Angelo to share a little bit about Cabral to us.
Ryan, can you minimize the?
Yeah. Yes. Okay, good evening. My name is Angelo Barbosa. I was born in Cape Verde Islands. And I'm in the US for the last five years. It's been an incredible learning experience for me. Because I'm not only learning about the US, which is an incredible country, but also I'm learning my own country, in this country. Because Cape Verdeans landed in the United States for so long. And listening to the discussions you're having in this board meeting, I feel even more responsibility because we are part of the community. We want to be involved in all sorts of, you know, opportunities and challenges as contributors and to help the school system to be better. So I'm the director of the Institute for Cape Verdean Studies at Bridgewater. And as Superintendent has said, we have been working for the last year or so in building connections and trying to find ways to engage with students, with institutions, and reinforce this collaboration between US and Cape Verde. I have been doing presentations lately because they asked me to do in, you know, different areas. So I did a presentation in Brockton that I had the pleasure to have Barbara there. So I'm trying to do something related to that just to bring you to some information on about who we're talking about and why that is important. I mentioned Cape Verde Islands. So this is a very tiny, remote islands, I would say, but with an incredible history, connecting Africa to the United States and to the world. Cape Verde was a colonial country by Portuguese for 500 years. And you can see that if you go back to history, Portuguese, Portugal had many colonies in Africa. So just to give you a sense that we are part of a context that is really well studied. And I'm really happy to see that Professor Mendy is mentioned here because he's a scholar that has a very deep research on Africa and especially on Emile Cabral. I would like to mention context. So we, I said we were a colony from Portugal, but I have to say that this entire context, until Emile Cabral came to scene, has to do with a colonial society. So we need to talk about family, abandonment, injustice, all sorts of social degradation. And this items that I have here is just a brief notice on how family really almost vanished, the Cape Verdean population throughout the years because of the, you know, malfunction of the government, not really taking care of the people. So in one specific year, most of, you know, half of the population of the country died because of starvation. So this is pretty much the context that Emile Cabral comes, because he was, yes.
Could you tell us when you're talking about?
Well, I'm talking about since the 1500s on.
1500s, okay, thank you.
You know, this is the, pretty much the situation that we saw in the country, the different families moments in the country.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Emile Cabral was born in 2019, 24. So as Superintendent mentioned, this year is going to be 100 years celebration. So he, his father and mother had to immigrate from Cape Verde because of that situation to Guinea-Dissau. So Emile Cabral was born in Guinea-Dissau, where, you know, the entire history happens after that. But I just want to focus on his ideas. I think it's important to see what is happening now around the world. I think what Emile Cabral stood for has to do a lot with some of the discussions we see today worldwide, not only here in US, in Africa, in Asia, in Europe, everywhere. So he's becoming more and more important because of the ideas were so strong and so actual. So he was talking about this idea for the colonial powers taking over again to some of the countries in Africa. He stresses this idea about cultural identity as the thing that is most important to people. You know, talking about unity and solidarity around the world, not only in our entire community, but you know, seeing the world as a whole. And of course, this idea of a social justice. One of the things that I really have seen in the US recently is discussions about racial justice and how you engage communities to create more understanding about this kind of issues. Emile Cabral was an agronomist. So his interest for environment is a lot of this you can see in his own writing. So he's someone that has an incredible contribution on soil erosion, not only in Portugal, but also in many of the African countries that he visited. Of course, education. One of the most important quotes about Emile Cabral is in education. So how you find ways to empower our students to be better, to learn. And of course, confronting global injustice. So he's been studied by scholars around the world. There is so many publications on him for the last 10, last 10 years. And universities around the world are, you know, putting focus on studying his ideas. As I mentioned, there is so many quotes that we could use, but I decided to bring this one and it has a lot to do with what I heard in the beginning. Building a world-class education, you know, engaging students, engaging the community has a lot to do with the learning aspect of, you know, life and, you know, you name it, in education system and so forth. So he's pretty much saying this slide about why he's positioned himself to fight against the colonial system. It's because he's looking into the future of the children of the Cape Verdean and African countries as a whole. So he says in his quote that learning is a process we should undertake always. You learn every day and try to learn from everybody. So this is the part that I believe I would make a call here because I heard someone making a call. This year is a centennial celebration. There is a network of institutions coming together and the Institute for Cape Verdean Studies is part of this network. I would like really to extend my invitation to the school system here for us to join the celebration because this is not only Cape Verde, it's entire Africa is involved in this, European countries. Many organizations here in the US are coming together to join this celebration for this year. A lot of different initiatives. This is just a few flyers from events that are already scheduled throughout the year. So this is going to end in September. So it's popping up. I'm just bringing some for you to see how this really is going to make a difference. The picture of those gentlemen that you see there, so the lady is the president of Emile Cabral Foundation in Cape Verde. The other gentleman is the former president of Cape Verde. His name is Pedro Perez, so that's why we have his name at the institute. The next one is the actual prime minister of Cape Verde. So this section was kind of the day they launched formally the celebration of 2024 on Emile Cabral. I think I should leave this with you because since we talked about education, as you know, UNESCO is an important institution in that area. So Emile Cabral writings and archives are being, have been submitted to the UNESCO to be as the memory of the world. So imagine if you are coming to this, you are joining an incredible network of institutions and people that are supporting this kind of initiatives. And remember, this is going to help our students, our scholars and families that are interested to learn about the world. Next and last slide, not to take much of your time.
We can stop sharing. We lost it.
Sorry, because it showed me something here that I don't know what I did. So my last slide, in fact, was a picture to show that we have been working together with the school system here. We have done a lot of activities. We are trying to put in contact students in Cape Verde and students in this area. Emile Cabral said, you learn always with other people. The world will be better if we connect students to other realities, other cultures. They can exchange and learn from each other. So this is the message I would like to give, leave with you and again invite you to join the celebration with us throughout this year. Thank you.
And I think one of the greatest connections, right? I always finish when Angelo says it, I say, go bears. Because Bridgewater, right, and really trying to help us pull that forward. And as a student who went to Bridgewater, celebrating that. And we recently went back for a visit on campus and got to visit the institute and spend some time where there are a few renovations going on, but they're also right in the epicenter of everything that's happening on campus. But as we're building that out, I think one of the things that stood up to me as well in our conversations about Emile Cabral, and Barbara reminds me often, is he believes in every just cause. And as we learn about his commitment to children and the connection to education, I really dug in. And even when he was moving his people around and he was fighting for the independence of this country, he built a hospital for his people. He made it available to everyone in the village while they were there and they kept it operational. Same thing when they set up farms, right? And they were sharing that and the connection to our food justice. And we're talking a little bit about that beforehand in the community. But as we've done that and we've built up our day of belonging, Barbara comes every year to our Community Partnership Expo and spends time and talks with our educators individually. Sometimes I go down, I go, I can talk to you anytime, I really should get out of the way. But we were having a great conversation and others were coming over. And through that, we built out our grade two opportunity, all of our grade two students going and visiting the museum and cultural center, learning about the Tatarugas, learning about Oreo, which is Mincala, but by the proper name. And now we're translinguaging, right? We're learning a little bit of Portuguese and we're learning a little bit of Creole. And we're all blending our words, but somehow we all understand each other at the end of that. So it's great. But we also want to bring that information to more of our students and connect with them. So in the global year of Emile Cabral, we opened up a creative expression contest. And we want to recognize three students, one of whom is here with us this evening. We had a combination of posters and poetry, but at the end of all of it, I think they captured the essence. And again, Barbara, I'm going to quote you one more time, but the brilliant, brilliant humanist that Emile Cabral was. So Anna, do you want to come up for a second? Come on over. So we will share this with you after. So Anna, congratulations. Anna Jackson has received recognition from the Cape Cod Cape Verdean Museum and Cultural Center for your submission. We promised we wouldn't read out, we're going to share it with you, represented with the colors, entitled Flowers, But Capturing the Humanist Nature of Emile Cabral's Work and the Sense of Resilience, which is the orange clipper. So thank you very much and so glad that you shared this with us and we'll share it with the committee as well. Congratulations.
On behalf of Cabral, on behalf of the Cape Cod Cape Verdean Museum and Cultural Center, our partners at Falmouth and Bridgewater State, thank you so much for participating in this, the first Falmouth Cabral. You know, I used to say essay contest and you called it a creative?
Creative expression.
Expression contest. We started doing this in 2011 at Montemoy. One group, seniors, juniors, all high school. Falmouth has been phenomenal at everything we've asked for, wished for and hoped for. And you have younger folks just doing this with us and for us in the 100th year of Cabral. You're so far the only ones doing this this year. Thank you.
Good, may I just announce the names? So we're going to recognize two other students who were unable to join us tonight. So Dennis Stone and also Jeanne-Lee Gonzo. So they're going to receive their recognitions at school, but just again, very thankful. So sorry, a couple of luxury words.
No, no, your detail, mine's big picture. So just to capture what we're doing and we talk about student successes, we had that image of different pillars. And one pillar was community partners. And we don't, we don't think that students are successful unless a community comes in and gets involved. And so that's what's very important. So I definitely want to thank again for Director Angelo Barbosa for being that partner, being that expert that we needed to come in here. So came all the way from Bridgewater to come in here. So I'm very happy for... So I'm very happy for, for, for his relationship. Somewhere across the ocean, we have a professor, Zita Vera, who comes in and helps us with support as well. So we got international support, we got Bridgewater support, but then we got local support. Don't look away. But Wesley Leck, you are the president of the, the museum that we have here with the Cape Verde Museum and co-founder Barbara Burgo. You are not only co-founder, but you are activist extraordinaire and we're so thankful for, for your involvement there. And I can't forget the Cape Verdean, Cape Verde Club that we have in there. So we have many involvements that we have there. I'm looking at our representative also over there who's joining a couple of our community events, Representative David.
David.
Vera, sorry, sorry. So thank you very much for coming for the episode. I know you've been very monumental trying to get us to get involved and there. So in all these things, community partnership is huge, but not only that, I work with the E.I. You know, we, we think that diversity is not something to solve, a problem to solve, but it's something to enrich. And so we have many Cape Verdeans in our community and it enriches our, our instruction, enriches our, the way we look at things. And so this is a beautiful way of that's enriching. And I think also when kids see themselves in the, in the, in the curriculum, in the studies, that's also help. It's a powerful tool. They see themselves in that. And so that's very important. When we had Professor Zita come in and, and students go, are you Cape Verdean? And they're like, I'm Cape Verdean too. And that was so uplifting. It's a powerful tool and I love that we have that connection. And, and so, so that's a powerful tool for inclusion. Now, we had a great way of seeing what was going on. We made a video, Barbara, which we did not under, we did not realize her acting ability, but thanks. She, she made one. We, we had Ryan, we had Ryan Weber and Dr. Tellier all connecting to make this video and we showed it to the school and students were able to learn about this, this wonderful man. And so they had that aspect in there that was very powerful. And we saw that you're, you're taking your show elsewhere. I think you're, you're doing some performance as well. So we're, you know, I, I'm amazed by what Barbara's doing. She goes, oh, Falmouth, you're doing fantastic. But it's really her drive, her ambition. I think the moment we met, you were like, all right, you had a vision and you're like, okay, I'm going to use this guy. And so, so it is, you are forced. And so I really appreciate that. And I want to end it with you just telling you, telling us any other, you know, any other thoughts about this whole project completely. Can you finish off with the? Oh, you want to see the video first? Or you want to look the video?
I wanted to see the video.
And then we'll, we'll have thoughts.
We're going to cross our fingers.
If I have anything to say, maybe.
Oh, no. Oh, I'm sorry. The video, Barbara.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, we don't have to show the whole video, do we?
It's only a couple of minutes, right?
No, it's long.
It's long.
So you can start with just the first, just first two minutes.
Okay. So if you don't have, so hold on this one and let's just have Barbara come up. Is it me? Is it yours? Okay. Barbara, come, come up. So I guess we don't have that one. We're going to show this other one in just a little bit.
And it's, it's getting to be a long night. I also am much older than you folks, like that I look. And so I know all of the meanings. You don't want it to go on ad nauseam, but I just want to say, in your little, little packet that I gave you, Dr. Peter Mendy is a teacher at Rhode Island College. He's retiring this year. He, he, like he said, he was born in Guinea-Bassau, okay? And I'm sorry, he was born in, I put it here for you. He was born in Gambia, West Africa. So I just put something in here to show you who and what he was. We have been doing five years of reading Frederick Douglass through Mass Humanities Grant. David Vera, who actually, he always says, you don't have to say it, but I always say it, is the one person here everywhere on Cape Cod who really saw our dream and helped it come to fruition. We met five years ago, five and a half years ago at Bobby Burns. And he said, let's see if we can get this done in Falmouth. And then, you know, COVID. So we did this virtually for a little bit. That first year, it was reading Douglass, but of course, everything I do includes Cabral. And so we asked to compare and contrast Douglass with Cabral. So if you want to know the enormity of how, what I feel about him, we are celebrating MLK Jr., but to me, to many of us, he is MLK, JFK, RFK. He's Obama and he's John Lewis and he's Malcolm X, all together he was, okay? So the connections with the schools and the students, what did Cabral say? The children are the flowers?
Of our revolution.
Of our revolution. I was an older student at Rhode Island College when I first met him and they were having a summer seminar in Cape Verde. I was allowed to go over there and my professor said it will be a life-altering experience that was 27 years ago and this has come to fruition. And getting even the Emerald House was David's suggestion, okay? And then when Angelo came in a year and a half ago, I said, we are a modest little place with a whole lot of, you know, interest and passion. And he loved it. Nana's Kitchen, the military exhibit, the School of Ernestina Room. And what he said was, being the vision, I was looking for the small piece of the earth here. And he said, if you put up monitors on the wall, don't forget, we could zoom to Cape Verde and back. We wouldn't have to have people just come and visit. And that was the brilliance of starting the sister school program. We have children right here teaching children over there, English, Zita Vera's program. It's, we used to call, remember deportment? Just what you were talking about here. It made me think of it, how to be polite, how to raise your hand, how, so how to speak English. They want to learn English in the American culture. We wanted them to help us learn a little bit of Portuguese and Creole. So together, Falmouth, my vision, Wesley's vision, David's vision, with the reception of all of you, we are not only celebrating 100 years of Cabral, we are celebrating the first ever partnership of this kind in the year that Cabral would have turned 100. He helped gain independence of Cape Verde and Guinea-Bassau. He was amazing. We are called Cabralists or freedom fighters ourselves, but it always takes someone like you folks to not only understand or try to understand my vision, but to believe in this. I will be 73 years old this year. I have been doing this for 30 years. Thank you, Falmouth, for helping me reach Nirvana.
Thank you, Barbara, and Wesley, and Angelo, and instrumental in helping us build this partnership. Thank you, representative of the year as well. Can we show this?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, okay. So Dr. Peter Mendy that I had mentioned, this is the book and it is absolutely amazing. And he actually sent a little message to you. So we're going to listen to his message to the school committee.
Hi, few Falmouth School Committee, for your interest in Cabral, for helping to promote, spread the legacy of Cabral. I'm truly grateful. Thank you.
The other book that he is holding, it is now translated into Brazilian Portuguese.
And he has personally signed a copy of the book for each one of you. So we are going to pass this out.
That's great.
Thank you.
Obrigada.
Oh, this has your name in it. Sharon Deeros.
I drove to Rhode Island College last weekend. I personally.
Thank you. Can I just say thank you again to our student and, and thank you to the parent that came here tonight to be a part of this. And I know that you perked up about the, the quote about the flowers and so related to your, to your home. So thank you so much and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And then the $20 gift certificate for eight cousins so that you can buy a couple of books.
I just want to call attention to the school leaders. We were talking about, we're starting off with Frederick Douglass and the reading, right? What does the Fourth of July mean to the Negro, right? And the reason why there's that connection is the day he gave that speech, July 5th, is the day of independence of the Republic of Cape Verde. And so that's the connection there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Enjoy the book about Cabral. Someone said it's a heavy reading, it's a lot of facts and figures.
It's so interesting though.
I don't know how you follow that up, but I'll turn over to Dr. Drew for the presentation of Falmouth Education Foundation.
All right, we have Ellen Hewitt Vera. Thank you so much, Ellen, for coming back again this year to share a lot of wonderful things about our connection. And I just want to say again, our partnership with the Falmouth Education Foundation is incredible and the supports that they give our, our teachers. So I won't give away your, your presentation, so I'm going to let, let you go ahead. But thank you so much for coming back to the school committee.
Well, it's great to be here and what a great day to be here. This summer I went to the museum, so I felt like I had a whole context. It's like, well, sometimes things are meant to be. So thank you for this, for this opportunity. I want to start with just a little bit of history, a little piece of history. And that is the first year that the Falmouth Education Foundation awarded grants was in 2006. And in 2006, we granted awards for six projects and $15,000. Well, since then, we have funded over 800 projects for over a million and a half dollars. It's very exciting. I say that, I always like double check. And this year, the numbers were higher than they've ever been before. In fact, we have the large grants, which is both the continuing and the new project grants, were up 30% from the previous year. And the mini grants, and the mini grants are unanticipated needs that teachers come up, experience up to $350 they can request, was up 80%. So, so that's a long ways from 2006. So I want to say that, I want to kind of give some of the breakdown of what some of those projects. There are 41 large projects, both continuing and new, for a total of $164,929. 126 mini grants, what I just described, totaling $26,103. And three student impact grants, Ellen Burrow student impact grants. And those were two students or more do a project up to three, they can get awarded up to $300 for a community. And the community can be the school community or the broader Falmouth community. Those are the ones that I personally get the most excited about. So the grant total for this, for 23, 24 was $191,932. So the projects go, I think you all, you know this, the projects go across all grades, all schools, all subject areas. And this year, a lot of the themes were around access and equity, collaboration, of course, there are hands-on learning experiences and a continuation of working on the manifestation of COVID in terms of both academic needs to address some academic gaps as well as socio-emotional gaps. So we're excited that we funded a lot of the, that we're able to fund almost everything that was requested, or at least a portion of all the projects. But it also kind of stretched our resources more than anticipated because we see the need, we need to be able to do that, which means that this past year, a real focus of the foundation has been in donor cultivation and also in our upcoming, this is, here comes the pitch, our, the upcoming gala. And so right now, the gala, usually, right now, we have 100, we've sold 137 tickets because we initiated to have an early, early registration period. Last year, we only had a total at the event of 167. So already, even though the event is on March 16th, and the information I passed out gives more descriptions of some of the grants and also information about the gala. So, you know, if you want to go, like how you can help FBF, spread the word about the gala. That's really our main fundraising activity.
It's a great event. I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. But if you have not gone, you need to go. It's one of my favorite places, favorite events to do.
It's so much fun. Oh my gosh. I mean, I, I'm kind of peripheral to the planning process, but it's so exciting to hear, like I talked to Meg today, who's the leader of the event. And oh my gosh, I was so excited about it myself. And I'm not always excited about events like this, but I am with our gala. I also, the, so we're getting ready, already beginning to gear up for the upcoming grant year. The applications this year are due for the, for the large project grants on April 15th. Usually it's April 1. We kind of stretched it mainly because we didn't need to make it so tight for everyone. So why not stretch the deadline when you can do it? So we were able to do it. And this Thursday, there's a teacher's workshop. It's virtual from four to six. And that's an opportunity that the program committee, and the program committee of the foundation is the group that really makes the recommendation to the board and oversees the whole grant management process. So they're really key. They're the, they're really key in making this, this happen. And they, at the, at the workshop, they go over the guidelines, they kind of show some examples, they get people excited and increasingly wanting to bring in people who haven't applied for a grant before. That's why we need to have the fundraiser, haven't had a grant before to do so. And I want to thank you, Sonya, because you made sure that that word got out to the, to the whole Falmouth Public School System early. And I just really appreciate it. We put it right on our website right away and I think it's going to make a difference. So thank you. Appreciate that. I think I also wanted to, thank you. Yes. I love Juneteenth activities. I know, I know. And so I just appreciate though, because I just love the energy of it and I also appreciate your leadership and I got to meet people, I get to meet people in the community that I wouldn't often have an opportunity to meet. So thank you. I really appreciate it. And I appreciate Heather for being a liaison and coming to our board meeting and working of ways that we can support and better make the connection between the, the board and the foundation. I appreciate it. And of course, Lori, who oversees it all and guides, makes all the pieces happen. So I'm going to close with this, the mission and realize that in it, I really appreciate every, the partnerships and as, the longer that I've been part of the foundation, I've witnessed the deepening of the partnerships, which is just so exciting. So the mission of the Falmouth Education Foundation is to enhance educational excellence in the Falmouth public schools, believing that quality public schools are essential to a thriving community. The foundation seeks to develop the charitable support needed to supplement the publicly-funded school budget.
Thank you.
Thank you to EBF for always stepping up, for always being amazing. And the gala is super fun if you've never been.
Super fun.
Super fun.
Next up, we have the presentation of the superintendent's mid-cycle evaluation, Dr. Dur.
And once again, it's, you know, it's going to be so exciting after the last two presentations.
Good luck.
I know. We will get through this. So I'm updating the action steps, the benchmarks. We're midway through all of this presentation, as well as the original goals in your Google Doc with all of this information. So all right, so goal one was to maintain a focus on academic excellence while improving the Clipper experience for all students. Benchmarks to report to the school committee on the MCAS data prior to and since COVID, communicate information from the DESI on the restart of the baseline since COVID, and report to the school committee on identified areas of growth and areas of concern. And Dr. Teller and I presented that information on October 24th. And the last is a presentation on the advanced course enrollment data, and that is scheduled for February 27th. And we have the key action step two is about the two-way communication. And the benchmarks hold seven conversation sessions with staff. All seven of those sessions are completed. Hold six conversations sessions with students at Falmouth High School. Three of the six are completed. We have continued to meet with each of the three student advisory groups. For the elementary group, we have had three of the three sessions. And for Lawrence and High School, which are two separate groups, we've had two sessions for each one of those groups. For all of our the sessions, once the sessions are done, I will create a summary of, you know, in 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 sum of all the conversations we've had, and then those documents will be uploaded for you to see. And then the open door policy has certainly been in place. So on the the sessions, we've had conversation sessions with the staff before. So I think the important thing here is that we expanded to make sure that there was one in every single school this year. So that was part of the new activity. So goal two was to build capacity among all members of the administrative team to effectively communicate the mission, vision, values, priorities, and activities of the Falmouth Public School. And the key action step one was for our administrative council to identify areas of focus, learn, develop, practice the skills for three sessions with Chris Horn from Horn Communications. So we have reported some of the updates. That was on our newly acquired skills. So we provided the school committee updates on September 9th, November 13th, and January 9th. We've had two of our sessions with Chris. We have the third session scheduled in March, the 26th of March. But some of the things that that we learned, I just wanted to share, is how to share a Falmouth Public School story through a narrative, a story that can be put on the website. But along with that, that you just don't do the website. You do an email blurb. You do a web excerpt, a social media post, and with the understanding of how to present that contact. How do you write it so that works? So the first exercise that we did, and we shared out with you and our community and has been posted, was around our social emotional learning. So we were in groups, we wrote stories, we went through this whole process about how you actually communicate the good things that are happening. Also, we were administrative council was working on, and I should say administrative council was our district office staff, on publicity plans. So if we are, we'll use the Belonging Series. So he walked us through how to make sure that we are doing, developing with a timeline along with the social media posts, communications out to the principals, communications out to families, and leading up to the event, getting quotes and pictures at the event, and then making social media posts after, and then starting the whole process up for the second process. So he's worked with us on several different topics now on how to, which kind of keeps us in pace and not forgetting to do all those communication pieces that you're supposed to do as you, because life does get busy for all of us. And so it's been a really nice guide. He also with the with some of the district office was doing a communication schedule with all the different events. And so one of the things when we looked when he helped us with that is that when we were doing the equity audit, was going to end up overlapping with the title, no, which title?
Title one.
The title one. The title one, surveys that had to go out in the month of January. And so working together, you don't want those overlap. So how do you have the big picture? Making sure that we had the equity audit, parents were able to complete that, get that finished in December, and then start the equity audit that, or not the other survey that we had to do for DESI that was required. So I know that sounds simple, but there's a lot of those different things on that whole communication plan. There's just two examples of where it was going to overlap, and we had to kind of separate that. And then the flyers that we, that you saw that we developed for town meeting and the budget infographic for the budget presentations. Those were two things that he actually taught us how to develop flyers that gives information that's very, you know, quick. You know, not having too much information on the flyer, but it is a way of communicating what we're doing. So that's what we're doing so far, and more share on the next session. So the next key action was communicating the key focus areas, increase and improvement in communication with staff and families. So the first message was a convocation, and that took place on August 29th with the school committee. We shared our, the district goals with all the school principals. That was on September 26th. And there have been 13 letters of communication from my office today. The next step was providing that two-way communication and that open door policy. We have kept time on my calendar so that we can make sure that parents are able to get in. I don't think this this year that we've had anything from a day or the next day, the parents haven't been able to get into the office. Even though we were blocking two hours each week, we were able to make sure that the parents were able to come in as needed. Hold seven coffee hours. I've completed five of the seven. And again, forthcoming will be kind of a summary of all of the discussions. New activity, I used to do the coffee hours four during the whole year at the admin building. And now we've gotten out to the schools, one at every school. And I think that was an improvement this year for sure. And then holding one-to-one sessions with teachers at each school. Then I spent the day at each, at five of the seven schools so far. And then the Belonging Series. And we're going to talk, have a little update about that soon because we just held our second of the third of the three sessions in the Belonging Series. Goal three was to complete a comprehensive review of the business office practices and procedures to improve effectiveness and increase transparency. We worked with the admin team. This is the, this is a new activity where we, on August 17th, we spent a half a day with the with the principals and really got a lot of in-depth training on the actual budget, be more transparent about the budget, more responsibility and decision-making at the principal level. And thank you, Paul, for coming up with that that new practice. And I think it's been going really nicely with the principals. To follow up on that, we were meeting individually with each principal three times. All the, the first session with each principal, individual principal was completed in the months of November and December. We're in progress. We're almost done. The second round, which will be completed by January 30th. Increase the number of two-way communication opportunities related to operating the budget and capital plan. We said that we would report at seven meetings. This is budget updates, and these are the sheets, and we'll have one tonight. I didn't put that, but that will be the fifth one of the seven. Highlights, some of the highlights was around the big non-salary items was one of the highlights. We talked about the special education funding, and we, so we've done four of the seven highlights. Again, all the details of this are in your Google document. Hold five budget subcommittee meetings. Six meetings have been held. Three of the three finance subcommittee meetings, two meetings with our PTOs. Paul and I completed both of those budget meetings. Four meetings with the town CFO. We've actually had five meetings to date. And then presentation with the finance committee. We had one in the fall around the capital plan. And February 13th will be around the FY25 budget. We're, we have built a process for identifying, building maintenance projects. We are, we have it down. We're actually going to put it in a document form that's going to be easy to read, and that is forthcoming. We also to advocate increased budget capital plan for ongoing building maintenance. We've talked quite a bit about that. We'll have, continue to be talking about that and explore options for the town and how to cover more expensive one-time costs. We have, I've had seven meetings with the town manager between July and December. And we have now, we are having a facilities tour at each one of our buildings. We have completed the first tour up here at Falmouth High School. The timeline was July 1 through April 8, and I am on target for completing all the action items and having all the evidence submitted to school committee by April 8.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to say I love the fact sheets. I find them so helpful and handy, and I thank you for that. I also thank you for this great presentation and update. I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Moving on, presentation of fiscal year 25 budget.
Assume, or turn it over to Paul. Well, I'm going to start and then Paul said, hold on. Okay, so we are coming down to the end of our budget season. We have presented to you several times during the school committee meetings. We have now met with the the subcommittee, and we have all the details of the FY25 budget. You have your budget books. And so right now, we're really going to focus in on what does that FY25 budget look like? And so we are going to get started, and now I'm going to turn it over to Paul. So this is the budget projection for FY25.
So after all these great presentations, I'm going to put everybody to sleep. All right, so we we have a handout with you as well to make it easier to to read the numbers. You can see on the board, they come out pretty small. So let's just talk about the sort of the overall sources of funding that we expect for fiscal year 25. And starting with the the numbers in the insert there, you see the total local budget request would be for $58,222,421. We expect that chapter 70 funding, the state financial aid, would be around $9.3 million of that $58 million. So that the town contribution would be around $48,899 and change. Again, so that $58 million is what we consider to be the the budget for the for the town purposes. It reflects a 3.64% increase from the prior year. So in the pie chart, you can see the largest component there is the town contribution. Again, that will depend, there may be some interchange between what the chapter 70 number comes out finally. But this is, that 9.3 million is from this year. This is what the number was for fiscal year 24, so we're just carrying that on for next year. On top of that, you have grants. This is again, the fiscal year 24 grant level. We'll probably see some increase in that for next year, marginal increase of it. But 1.71 million in grants, the largest of that is the IDVA grant, the 240 grant they call, will be just over, just under $1 million, about $996,000. The next large component I've mentioned in the past is the title one, which is about $484,000 for reading and math. And then there is a number of smaller grants, title two, three, four, and the Perkins grants that make up the remainder of that number. The third source of funds up there is the school choice. The number is roughly around 166 today, students that choose Falmouth as their district to be educated in. And that amount, again, that's based on this year's figure. We're carrying it over into next year. So that would be about $980,000. That would be roughly 1.5% of the total budget, total source of funding. And then finally, the last figure there, $918,000, that record, that's the circuit breaker for special education funds. That would be, that number is based on the tuition, that the reimbursement level we expect to receive for tuition payments that we are making this year. So there's a one-year lag for the circuit breaker refunds to the district. So we expect that number to grow up. To give you some perspective, circuit breaker for fiscal year 24 was around $646,000. It's going to increase $918,000. That's because of that big jump that we had in, on a district tuition, that 14% jump in other tuition expense for this year. So that total, you know, picture is roughly $61,836,000 in total funding for the district, for which, again, the town budget is the $58,222,421. This is, these figures, it's important to note this, these figures do not include the additional request of $300,000 we will be making for fiscal year 25 from the special education stabilization funds. So that amount will be on top of the funds that you see here on this chart. I haven't put it down here in the chart because it hasn't yet been approved. All right. So the next, any questions on that before moving forward?
Yep, Heather.
Yep.
Just in terms of of total numbers, the increase from last year to this year in that that total budget amount, how does that compare to, say, just general inflation? Are we essentially looking at stable funding dropping or increasing in real terms?
It's pretty much on the level of the current inflation environment right now, 3%, 3.5%. The budget increase is about 3.64%. So it's a slightly increase over inflation. All right, so you know, the next question is, I'll So, you know, the next question is obviously, how do we use this money? This, again, this pie chart is based on the top of the budget number of $58 million. So it does not include this grants or, this is just the budget portion. So of that amount, $49,184, the biggest component is salaries. That represents about 84% of the budget here. And that's a slight increase in percentage terms from, from fiscal year 24. Typically ran around 82%. I know, I'll come back to some of the reasons. And the other figure there, the $2,544,000 is instructional supplies. That's roughly the same as where it was previous year. Along with, you'll see transportation there just above that, the $2,583. That's an increase from last year, slightly based on the contract that we have now with Lucini. So that's again, 4.4% of the budget. The next one is the instructional supplies. No, I'm sorry. Out of district tuition is $1,247. Now, this number does not include the $300,000 draw that we're looking to make on the special education stabilization fund. So the total number in practical terms will be 1.547 for fiscal year 25. And I just want to emphasize, this is only one portion of funding the special education cost for fiscal year 25. So you have three sources. You have the budget, let's call it the million five here, $547. You have the 240 grant, which is around $850,000. And then you have the circuit breaker, which will, net after cost will be just around $650,000. So all told, you have roughly just over $3 million in funding for the special education, which is just where we're projecting the out-of-district cost will be for fiscal year 25. I just want to make sure people understand that number. So the number we show here, that 1.247, may look small, but it actually is only one part of that whole funding mechanism for special education, out-of-district tuition. Maintenance is $1,054. That's stable from what it was prior years, down slightly actually. And as Laurie mentioned earlier, excuse me, that we have shifted some of the expense to the capital budget. Give a couple of examples, $60,000 for doors are now on approved for the capital budget. About $300,000 for flooring, $50,000 for painting. You know, so we've been successful in moving some of this expense to the capital projects. And it, all of that is also part of the 10-year capital project. So there'll be, you know, ongoing requests each year for funds in those categories. And then utilities cost is at the top of the page, the 1.6 million. We've talked about this in previous meetings. But the electrical costs are projected to go up 35% from their actual cost of 2023. We also expect a significant increase in budget and significant increase in natural gas pricing. So again, so our numbers are up significantly to totally 1.6 million for utilities. So those are the broad categories of expenditures. And you all have your, your more detailed booklets as well. With that, I'll open it up.
So on February 13th, our next meeting, we'll be asking you to vote on a 3.64 increase for a total of budget for the FY25 of $58,222,241. We will also be asking for you to approve a request for $300,000 from the special education stabilization fund.
Teri, again, the finance committee.
And the finance committee. So you vote on the 13th, Paul and I will go and present to the finance committee on February 14th.
Do we have a sense of their reception of this amount?
They've been completely supportive.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's a testament to the number of meetings and communications that we've had throughout this process in the budget subcommitments.
Thanks. This is a curiosity question. When the solar array was built at the dump area, it was sold to us as a committee that we would benefit from that. And you speak of a 35% electrical increase. As a school system, are we getting any benefit from that solar array?
Well, we, let me just.
I may not be asking this correctly. I guess something that's stuck in my mind.
Yeah. Let me answer it this way. The 35% increase is what the town will be under the contract. So it's, it's town-wide. There's, but you know, it's a good point because I can't speak to that in particular. But I think that if we look at solar projects going forward, there will be some benefit to the school system going forward. But I can't speak to that one specifically.
I guess a question and a comment along similar lines. Just that I would hope that as, you know, these conversations are ongoing, but as we're working with the town on renewable energy projects on the school grounds, that not only those capital expenses of installing and the payback time of the capital expenses, but you know, this impact on, on utilities budget is hopefully a big part of those conversations. And I'm curious, I guess, whether in those situations where we do have renewable energy cited on school grounds, understanding those are town buildings, does that, does that, would that power, would that energy essentially be? I don't know, electrons are electrons, they go everywhere in the grid, right? But would that electricity production on the school grounds be counted towards the schools specifically? Or would it be distributed, you know, through the town's whole electricity municipal utility budgeting?
So you might as well give your update on the solar instead of white. It seems like it would be a disconnect not to go ahead and talk. So we're going to go ahead and give mine under the update now.
So we, you know, we've been working with Stephanie Madison. She was a new town sustainability coordinator. And, and actually, before Stephanie came on board, we started the evaluation of buildings for, for structurally to see if they could, you know, be possible, put solar panels on the rooftops, et cetera. So back, starting in September, I guess, I believe, we evaluated East Falmouth, the North Falmouth, and Morse Pond. East Falmouth and North Falmouth, and this is a long-winded answer to your question, Heather.
This is the whole update.
We gotta go, we're gonna get an app.
The buildings could not support solar panels. It'd have to be enormous structural reinforcement of the roof. If a roof costs $3 million or $3.5 million, it'd be a $7 million bill to do, to get it to a point where a solar panel could be put up there. They just don't have the capacity for additional weight. So Morse Pond, there may be some hope for that part at least of that roof can support solar panels. And so with that evaluation, the engineering firm is still working on that. But we're hopeful that there may be some capability there to, to be able to support the solar panels. We also looked at, and more recently, in coordination with Stephanie Madison, working with Select Energy in building canopies, solar panel, carport canopies. So in the valuation of that, we looked at every single school. So the high school, Lawrence, Morse Pond, et cetera, all down the line. So there are certain solar projects that can be done if there is enough electricity produced, which is the first limiting factor. So it has to be worthwhile. Where Select Energy comes into play is they, they sign a lease for the land, and then they go out and build the solar panels. So they make the capital investment for 25, for whatever cost of the solar panel. And they lease the land for 25 years and, and get their money to the electricity cost. And, and so there's a minimum size that they have to build. And then there's also a limitation on whether enough energy is generated and then is enough energy is used by the building. So if you generate X amount of energy in the school building on that site, can use at least that energy and not have it shipped off-site or be in front of the meter, then that's a project that can be near-term. If the school has, doesn't have the capacity to use that energy, and that energy has to be shipped back into the electric grid, those projects are now facing a several-year delay because of the massive amount of solar projects that are coming online. And the, the electrical grid isn't strong enough to support all that energy commitment. So there's, you know, we're now looking at a timeframe for those projects of fiscal year '26, '27, '28, before that happens. So the smaller schools, I know this is really long-winded. The smaller schools use less energy. And those projects probably won't be available to be done until '26, '27, '28. North Falmouth would be a good example where the parking lot in North Falmouth could hold the solar panels on the parking canopies. But right now, it doesn't use enough energy in the building.
But here.
This seems prime.
And it can't be.
Well, we got, go ahead. I mean, share about them.
Yeah. The next, the one that can do both, again, is Morse Pond. It can do the roof potentially, and it has a good parking lot that it could use. So that's when we were candidates, we're kind of looking to push forward. The high school, which is the huge user of electricity, felt because of the, you know, the size of the building and it's run year-round with the HVAC system. So the problem with the high school is you really can only put up the canopies in the C lot, the teacher's lot here on the side. The front, because of the underground connections, you can't put it, you can only put it in half of the parking lot up front. And the roof here is 18 years old. So in order to put up the solar panels on the roof, you'd have to replace the roof before you. So that kind of, I mean, this is all the variations we've been going through.
But we don't, we don't replace roofs 18 years.
So that kind of knocks Falmouth High School down the list of priorities. So coming back to your question, Heather, the immediate beneficiary of these projects, if they're behind the meter, if there would be the school that they're involved with, it would only have to be exported, would there be attention for the wider town to be. But that, that relationship yet hasn't been determined about how that's going to happen because we're just not there yet. We're still at the stages of picking out which building, which parking lot, et cetera, we could use and get it on the, get it done within the timeframe that I mentioned, '26, '27, '28 period. All right.
Yeah, so just clarifying question with the high school. You said front lot, there's underground infrastructure that's in it. But that also includes the?
Too far from the building. You'd have to, so the parking lot over by the tennis court you're referring to, the distance that the electricity would travel would be too great. You'd lose, it would take a big investment to then, you know, set up the conduit and dig it and then connect it to the building. So.
If it's easily answered, I don't want you to spend a lot of reason on. No, no, I didn't mean your explanation. No, I didn't mean that. I meant if you have it really, just shut up, Terry, answer. We have wind power here, though. Does it do like the lights at night? Or do you know what our wind things?
The turbine isn't, isn't operating anymore. Yeah, the turbine isn't operating anymore. There's been damage to the turbine.
I mean, I used to, I used to go up and down, but now it's down for good.
Do we have hopes of replacing it?
What's the conversation we can have, Stephanie?
Is it like in that '26, '28 category?
We don't know that we've had the conversations because it's been so focused on solar. But it is a question we could ask.
Oh, can, can I just ask a quick question? So you didn't mention where Lawrence falls in that. Because we also have parking lot slated, so.
The consensus, even by everyone involved, when we're doing the surveys in the different areas, if you did the parking lot at Lawrence, you'd probably have the biggest resistance in the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, probably.
And so we didn't pursue that.
That's fair. I just, thanks.
All right. Thank you.
All right, I hope that wasn't too convoluted.
No, it's great to hear. It's really good to know we're working on it.
And I will say, it has been a pleasure to work with Paul through this budget season. His level of detail, how much he has kind of dug in and really has understood everything. Plus just being able to present, it's been, it's been a great year.
That's great. Thank you, thank you. That's great.
So at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing on the school budget. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on the school budget? Thank you, Kelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Does anyone in the audience wish to make a public comment on the subject of school budget? Please. Please come right up here. Thank you so much.
Hello, Alyssa Haykaris. I'll make my annual plug for including the playgrounds and the capital projects if they haven't been included already as part of building maintenance. Because I don't think we want any of our schools to not have playgrounds. And it's been an issue in the past with raising funds through volunteers and PTOs. And I think. And I think it also falls into the category of equity. If you're going to leave it up to volunteers to raise funds for the playgrounds, then it's a lot harder to manage that piece.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to? No? Okay. Sorry? Is my next one? No? Okay. Are there any discussions or presentations by the school committee or the superintendent on the school budget? I don't know.
I think we've answered all the questions. I think we have. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Is there a motion to close the school budget public hearing? Thank you, Kelly. Is there a second? Thank you, Terry. Okay. Excellent. So we have closed that. Moving on to, I guess we can skip the update on North Falmouth roof since...
No, it's a different, we also have an update on the budget FY '24.
There's so many. It's all blending. Okay.
So this is the, you should have it to your seat right now.
Yes.
Here's this in color.
Okay.
We got that.
This would be the year today.
Just quickly on the North Falmouth roof. We went out to bid for...
Well, it's okay. You can do it in whatever order, but the order of the agenda, it's this first.
Well, I'll quickly switch. So there's two months here, November and December update. And it really just, I'll just be quick on this. Essentially, if you're looking at the December numbers, so far, total expense for the year for the first six months is $24,258. That's both expensed and encumbered out of budget, the $56,175,788. So roughly 43% of our budget is expended or encumbered to date. So we're on track. I would, the only one thing I would just note is that in February, we're having a no purchase month. So we're essentially halting school purchases except for those that are funded by grants. And for building maintenance, we're doing it for February and March. And that's really to get a perspective on where we are on, you know, year-to-date. You have, so, you know, we've talked about at the beginning of the year, you sort of have a front loading of expenditures or encumbrances where people open up a PO for an expected purchase. Now, as the time goes on during the school year, that purchase order, let's say it's for $1,000, maybe only $500 has been spent. So we kind of go in, we close those purchases down, those POs down, and then we open up new ones for any later purchases in the year. That allows us to sort of give us a better flavor on what our actual expenditures will be for the remainder of the year. So it's just a healthy exercise to...
Sure. So I'm curious about that because that's new. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, is that pretty standard? And will it become a standard that we do all the time? Or is it just a one-time thing where we're just trying to see what's...
No, we did it last year.
Oh, we did?
It was the first time. It's good, but this is practice and we close it. It worked well.
Okay. And then my second question is, does that also help at the end of the year, closing out? Because you've already done something.
It's a huge help.
Okay.
And it helps with us in sort of how to spend the remainder of the budget during the year. So it, it's a good discipline for us to have.
Yeah. And I just think it's really important to say that it is a normal thing to do because I think if the word gets out that like, oh, you know, we're freezing expenditures, people will worry.
Yeah.
And it's not something, it sounds like it's just, it's good practice. It has nothing to do with, you know, running out of money.
No, 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 no. And in fact, to just emphasize, we're only 43% of the way through the budget in the first six months.
Nice.
We're just doing it as just financial discipline to catch up on the invoices that are outstanding. And then secondly, to get a better perspective on the actual budget and clean up the bills.
That's great. Thank you. Very helpful.
All right. Now on to North Falmouth.
It's on the process of the...
So as you know, we are putting in an article for the replacement of North Falmouth roof as well as doing some material work that resulted in some of the damages from the pipe bursts and the leaks that have occurred in the building over time. And also there's exterior work that needs to be done. The drainage has to be done. The building currently just drains out of pipes directly onto the ground. And, you know, certain places, it's a real hazard. In the driveway area, for example, where the loading dock is, it's just a sheet of ice. So all of that has to be redesigned. So this is not a simple project. Like the T-ticket roof is about a $3.5 million project. We're looking at a more extensive project with the North Falmouth roof because of all of what I just mentioned. So that article is going to be coming up for a vote in the April town meeting and the vote you made that follows. As part of the initial getting ready, because we want to, as soon as the vote occurs, you know, if the town supports it, then we want to get the project geared up for the summer, if at all possible, and have it completed this summer. So we have a, we had a request for proposals from roughly 13 firms to be our owner's project manager for this project. We went through a selection process of that 13 or so applicants. We narrowed it down to three. This, the pool of applicants, any one of them could do it. They were all very highly qualified, skilled in building schools, skilled in school roofing projects. What we did do is decided to select those who had experience with the town or had a previous experience with the school system or three had a local presence in the town. So those were the three weighting factors that influenced our decision. We interviewed three candidates, Leftfield, Jacobs, and Vertex. And we selected Leftfield, which was our owner's project manager for the T-ticket roof and had done the work on the roof engineering projects for the solar panel. So they had a sort of a head start on this, but we still needed to go through for procurement purposes, a bidding process. So Leftfield will be our owner's project manager on this. And they did a tremendous job with us on T-ticket. So.
My second thought, I almost supposed to say anything, but yes, they did. They were phenomenal. They were also very clean. And I live in the neighborhood. If you want to know anyone who's working there, they were the happiest group I've ever seen anywhere. They were just phenomenal. So I'm glad to hear that.
Well, thank you. I'll pass that along. The, and the other two, the other object of this long-term is to find a bench of OPMs we will work with going forward as well, beyond Leftfield. So Jacobs and Vertex were both great. Vertex is doing the Hattville Fire Station, for example. The principals at Jacobs are deeply involved with the town. So either one of those firms could do business with us going forward. So that we, it's a deep bench as we go to do other projects as well. So go ahead, Kelly.
Please. Okay. So my first question is, is it going to be MSBA eligible?
Not, not, not for the roof is too young, unfortunately.
Very leaky, but yeah.
Very.
What was the second question? Oh, the second question is, will having them selected and onboard already mean that the estimate that we bring to town meeting will actually be more accurate? Because I know that's often a conversation that happens at town meeting is, where'd you get this number from? And, and wanting to, like, town meeting members want to know that the amount that they are putting, whoever is putting forward is accurate.
So we will, we hope to have, be at the 50% point for the engineering, for the final number for the, for the town. But they've been working with this number for a while now, Leftfield has. So the confidence factor on the, on the number
Is pretty good.
is pretty good. But that really depends on, you know, the architect, the engineer, you know, once selected, doing their review of it too. But we are running up against timing issues here. So that's my only concern.
Yeah, because the warrant item will have to be in.
That's right.
When does it have to be in?
Like next week.
Do we have to vote?
Yeah, we have it. Yeah. Well, the town helps prepare the language on the warrants, but we will have, come back and have you back.
And you've seen the article when we did our capital plan. So it's the same wording. I'm sorry, Susan.
Just a suggestion, as you mentioned, Kelly, there will be people at town meeting that will question the dollar amount. And we just need to be prepared with a, as much as possible, you guys do. This isn't just a roof. And getting that across to them.
That's right.
In this situation, because of the extent, it's not unusual to actually ask the project manager to also be there to answer the questions.
That'd be great.
And so having Leftfield, which I have no doubt that they would accept that, to be there to actually answer.
Thank you.
They have offered that, by the way.
That's really helpful. That's super helpful. Heather? I'm going to do it. I'm going to beat the dead horse. We are doing an extensive roof reconstruction. It seems really silly to not make the roof strong enough to hold solar.
So we, so we, no, we have the estimates on that. You can explain the difference in the cost of the roof.
Yeah, you can add about $7 million. It's, it's just prohibitive to do that.
It's sad because I think, I mean, we, you know, you have a school committee, you have administration that has been more than eager for, for years to be able to move in that direction. And every project has, has just not met the, you know, the viability to actually, to move forward in that. And it was the same with the T-ticket. We were very, you know, sad that we couldn't move forward in that one. So every project we've looked at, you know, this is what's happening. It's the cost, doesn't have the outcome. Although we know that solar energy is the best way to go.
I, I think the option, the best financial option for North Falmouth is the solar canopies while they're parking. And that won't cost us any capital. That's, that capital outlay is done by Select Energy. The roof is just, it's too extensive a project.
And I, but I think that information, you're not the only one who has that question. And I think that's also going to happen at town meeting. People are going to want to know why we're spending all this money on a roof and we're not covering it in solar. And so that information has to also be easy to understand and readily available because, you know, we're not the only ones who want solar. Town meeting wants it too.
One other point on that, by the way. When you think about it, you know, we can put a new roof on a building in the summer. If we, we try to work on that building and restructure that roof.
Right. Then we have to close it.
That building's out of commission for a year.
Yeah.
So I think there's a practical consideration for that as well. We just, we could not reinforce these roofs without literally tearing up the inside of the buildings. And that could not get done in the summer period.
Chris?
Hi. I just had kind of one just quick question, and I'm not sure if this is even feasible. Are they able to do, I know you wouldn't be able to do like a large restructuring of, of the roof, but is it something where they could like incrementally improve the roof to some level that they can kind of, I mean, you know, this is kind of looking decades away to maybe eventually get to that point, you know, hoping the town's still running properly at that point. But, you know, is there any way of incrementally kind of improving the roof for its smaller amounts of money each year? But then eventually, whether it's, you know, the time you need a new roof in maybe 30, 40, whatever years, your roof is then structurally sound? Or is that kind of out of the question?
Well, for North Falmouth, it would be, it just, it'd be really difficult, from what I'm told, to structurally reinforce those roofs. It would be literally taking up everything, putting in new support beams and so on, and then putting the roof back on it. So the project that would make more sense from a roof solar panel is really Morse Pond. And then eventually, when the high school's roof is old enough, is to do the high school. You know, but, but right now, the elementary schools just aren't, weren't built with the capacity to hold the additional weight of solar panels. Would love it if they could have been, but it just, it's just cost prohibitive to do it. So Chris answered your question. I don't think you can do this as a partial project. You really, and the need for North Falmouth, by the way, to tell a story, you know, I was there on, this weekend on the cold weather and, you know, the maintenance crew was struggling to keep those pipes from freezing. I mean, at one point, the pipes, the sprinkler pipes in North Falmouth dropped down to 30 degrees while the room temperature was 70 degrees. So the classroom where the pipes were, were 70 degrees. They had the boilers onto the max. And it's way that roof, that existing roof is designed that there is a vent. And that vent just pours in cold air. And we literally were putting, the maintenance crew were putting up fans to try to push that warm air to the sprinkler heads to keep them from bursting. So, and they were on duty all weekend, I mean, till 2:00 in the morning. And great credit to the guys on that crew that led by Joe Dineen there. But that's how necessary this roof is to get replaced. So it really has to be all enough.
Thanks, Bob.
You mentioned Select Energy. Is that the energy company that the town uses or we use?
No, it's, it's, they were introduced, we were introduced to them through the town, through Stephanie Madison.
So this is one that the town...
The town, yeah. In fact, they are looking at, the town has an article going in front of the, the April meeting that will allow the town managers' selectmen to engage in a lease, long-term lease at the water treatment plant, at the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, and the senior center.
Is this a local company or a...
It's actually a large company, but this division is more local. So, but it's, it's part of a very, very large company.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Sweet one. Moving on. Thank you very much, Bob. I feel like I am so lourder and I think it's so good. Thank you very much.
We have more costs here.
No, I already tried that. They were rousing.
Moving on to act on the FEA memorandum of agreement. I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Bob.
So the FEA has submitted through the process, through DLR, the Department of Labor, a... a, a process of bringing in new employees into the Unit C contract, which is our teaching assistants. And so staff assistants and health assistants, they have asked to do that. If you'll remember, a few years ago, the school committee had asked them to go through that process so that we would know that they actually were choosing to be into the process. And that was our only way of knowing. So, so the vote had been taken and they, because we're moving forward with this, they would like to be a part of the teaching system. Couple comments, what your, in the teaching assistant contract, teaching assistants get a planning period. The health assistants and the staff assistants will not have planning periods. It just doesn't make sense for their roles. We've agreed that, that they can accrue their sick time that they already have and then they can take that with them into the Unit C contract. We have agreed that they would be placed on the Unit C salary scale that is closest to their current pay without having any reduction in pay. And that that, that if you vote for that tonight, that this would begin on February 1st. They also, which makes perfect sense, we agreed that the staff assistants and health assistants will have their own seniority list that would be separate from the teaching assistants, which makes sense because their roles are vastly different. Also, they recognize the same as the teaching assistants, the health assistants and staff assistants can change from year to year. That's recognition. And then the rest of the agreement is standard contract language. Does the, you know, you can read number six, seven, and eight. They're just basically our agreements. We got the first and last two. Okay, oh, so I'll, I'll just read that. So number six, upon execution of this agreement, the association agrees to immediately withdraw with prejudice to refiling, refiling its petition for unit clarification currently pending with the DLR. The association's legal counsel shall copy the committee's legal counsel on its withdrawal notice. That's because we've come to an agreement. So it's just a contract language of having to go through that process. Association and the committee agree that this agreement shall not be introduced into evidence in any future proceeding involving parties to this agreement, except that the parties shall be allowed to offer this agreement to enforce the term of terms of the agreement. Agreement shall be binding on the parties and may not be abandoned, supplemented, changed, or modified in any manner orally or otherwise, except by instrument in writing of concurrent and subsequent date signed by the association and the committee.
Excuse me, that we have, but it's number four that we don't have, that you didn't read.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know. It only copied pages.
Though number four is what.
This is the seniority that I said.
Yeah, but we don't have it.
Okay, so number four.
I know, but she read five, six, and eight, which she didn't read the one that was six. She's reading.
So four, the parties agree that seniority for health and staff assistants will be determined by their date of hire in the district as they transition into the Unit C contract and shall be maintained as two unique lists separate from the current teaching assistant members for the purpose of longevity and reduction in force determination. Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. No, 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 I misunderstood what was missing.
I blame Alan, he ran the copy machine. And he's not here to defend himself.
Is there a motion to act on the FEA memorandum of agreement?
So moved.
Thank you, Margaret. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Heather. Roll call, Chris.
Was this talked about before the school committee meeting?
Yes.
Oh, okay, then I'll abstain.
Okay.
Augusta, yes.
Terrence, yes.
Welch, yes.
Susie, yes.
Goldstone, yes.
Mostke, yes. Thankfully, that passes. Wonderful.
Thank you. And for the staff assistants and health assistants, welcome to the Unit C contract.
Just in tapping, which is.
I can sign it in my chair.
Okay, we'll make the official signature. We have the FEA signature. This will make it official. And so this change will happen quickly as the first paycheck after this, which is.
And can we get a copy of the whole thing? Please, since I messed it up.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sharon, we would be happy to do that for you.
I mean, I don't need it like now, but you know. Sharon's yours just for.
I know. I have to do that, make sure she's awake.
Moving on to discussion of naming tennis courts specifically to Jack Reardon. So Stephen Kaboka had reached out to the school committee and the superintendent to put a plug in for naming the tennis courts specifically the Jack Reardon tennis courts. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight. I know that we received, we as in the committee, received thoughtful emails from Stephen. He has asked me to read an excerpt of each of them. I know that we are not voting tonight. This is just the discussion of this. So I will just read this in representation of him. In a body of an email, sort of a, a plug for this, he had written below is my original email to Doctors Harris and Dr. Dur. I have a son who's a senior, excuse me, sorry. It's late, sorry. I'd like to recommend or propose that the new tennis courts for Falmouth High School are named after Jack Reardon when they are complete. The Jack Reardon Courts, or something to that effect, in my opinion, and probably many others. Jack Reardon and his impact on not only Falmouth High School and the town of Falmouth is on par with Dr. Antonucci's and James Cal Harris. He was a 40-year educator, athletic director for over 21 years. He also taught while the athletic, well, serving as athletic director. Thankfully, inching even a tough math student like myself through sophomore year geometry. One of his teams, while he coached tennis, won state championship. While athletic director, 19 Falmouth teams won Falmouth championships as well. Above that, the impact he had and the lives he touched were unmeasurable. Jack recently passed away and I for one can't think of a better way to recognize Mr. Reardon than to name the new courts in his honor. There's another excerpt I just want to read. In addition to all of that, Mr. Kaboka also said, forgot to add for context regarding why the courts are appropriate, Mr. Reardon was a longtime tennis coach at FHS and coached one of the teams to a state championship. So I am reading that on behalf of Mr. Kaboka. And now we have an open for discussion. Does anyone want to be guess? Heather?
I, I guess my initial reaction to, to this kind of organic proposal is that if we're going to have a naming opportunity, I'd prefer for that to be a, a process of saying, okay, we're going, we're going to name, we would like to name the courts after someone and, and actually have a, it's late, I'm having trouble putting it in. Call for, for broader input, I guess, is what I'm, I'm saying. Beyond what is one very, as you said, thoughtful and I think very appropriate request, but would just like to, to make it more of an open process where others have an opportunity to make suggestions as well.
Okay. That being said, if we receive anything between now and the acting on naming the tennis courts, I think that we should continue that conversation and continue the discussion. Kelly?
My concern is, is a little bit different. I think that over the last few years, we've seen a very broad movement in renaming things. And even scientific organizations have completely ended their naming of things after people. And, you know, I, I have no issue with Mr. Reardon or the things, the existing names that we have, but I don't think it's a good practice to, to name things after people. So, you know, I, I understand that if we're gonna put out a broader call, we'll have more input, but just in general, it's something that I don't support in general. I would not want to make it common practice to be naming things after anyone. And I think we're in a pretty good position in Falmouth that most of our buildings are not named after people, so we didn't have to go through that process. Even in Falmouth, we've seen things being renamed over the last few years. So I would just like to steer clear of it entirely.
Terry?
But we just named the Van Shell after a Falmouth educator. I mean, so we did name it, the town did name that a person. I think it goes beyond our, I don't like it resting on us. Let me put it that way. I mean, maybe, and I'd be willing to put my money where I'm at this, have a committee to find out, as Heather mentioned, get some input, find out a way to get input from townspeople. I think it's, the schools are part of their town too and their things. That's just my opinion on it.
Margaret?
Yeah, when I saw the agenda, since I'm not a long-term Falmouth resident, I checked who he is and I was quite impressed. And I did read the document that was sent to us. I, I do think naming can last for a long time and can get complicated. And I think that may be an issue that we should talk about is do we want to begin to name places after a person or, I mean, I think that's a broader issue. And I think that maybe we should talk about that before we decide to check on other, other, other people or other ways we want to name it. I mean, certainly, and this has nothing to do with this person. I was very impressed reading the obit, which is what I got online, and then the letter that I got. And he was very impressive. I don't know how the present athletic department feels about it. I think that may be important if it's going to be part of their domain. And I think that's a larger issue that we might want to talk about is do we want to start naming as a school committee or is that a good practice?
Right. I would just like to say, we're not starting naming. We have named, we have named our field house. We've named our track. This isn't something new. And while I appreciate the new trend is to not name for people in the scientific world or renaming things, I, I'm more than happy to open a larger discussion. I'm with Terry that this is kind of a big decision and maybe it doesn't land on the shoulders of the committee solely. There was a, a discussion between myself and the superintendent to hopefully have something in place for the official opening of the courts prior to the tennis season this year. But if this is, if we as the body feel as though this is something that's bigger than us or requires more conversation to the table, I'm A-OK encouraging other people to speak on this behalf. I'm totally fine with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I, I certainly don't want to make a decision and not have all the voices heard. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to superintendent update. This is gonna be fun. Does anyone remember the, like?
Did you say fast?
Fun.
I said fun. I said fun. And I was gonna ask, does anyone remember what the latest meeting we've had since I've been here?
I think we hit 11 once.
Oh, see, I was thinking I was, I really was hoping I was gonna beat the longest, but I don't, this will be long, but I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna make it to all of it. All right, I thought it was gonna. I was, I was going for it, but I don't know. I should be going more coffee. All right, next long meeting, I'll make sure there's plenty of coffee. All right, but this one's fun. I gotta, I wanna talk about our electric van. So everyone, we, we reported that we had the electric van. The Falmouth High School robotics team was the first group that got to use the van. And I want to read a message from a parent that said, "We've come a long way with the robotics club from two years ago when the team did not have a working robot and had to borrow a competitor's robot, and we had to carpool. Now they have full VEX equipment and a brand-new van to go to tournaments. This is why we like Falmouth Public Schools, always moving forward." So thank you. So I, I wanted to share that with everyone because it's, but it's exciting, right? But Mr., Mr. Cousins is the robotics advisor. He teaches physics in STEM 9. He was hired in 2021 and he immediately started the robotics club. When he started, there were six students. One has since graduated, but the other five are still on. This year, we have 11 students. And for the first time, they've had enough kids to divide into two teams during competitions. He shared, "We went to one competition at NOSAT the first year, placing 15 out of 15." The teams, we could not even get our robot to function during the competition that first year, but ended up having to borrow one, which is what the parent was, had remembered, to be able to, to compete. But this year, the team is competing in two competitions, NOSAT and DY. And at NOSAT, they placed 11th and 12th out of 15. So that was exciting, super growing. During the competition, they suffered a couple significant mid-match mechanical failures. But the teams rallied and completely rebuilt both the robots during the competition. And now they're going to DY and they feel like that they're gonna be in a very strong position. Next year, Mr. Cousins is hoping to enter the team into the first robotics competition. That's the name of it. It's not the first, it's called first, the FRC. And in this competition, the students will build robots that are up to five feet in height and 120 pounds in weight. And it's a bigger competition. There's like 84,000 students versus 30 students and they're very hopeful. So anyway, it's really grown over the last couple of years. And I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Cousins, the club advisor, our parents, who have been hugely supportive, supportive and our robotics students.
No.
Just that you represent us well and I just want, so it's exciting that we have opportunities that are exciting for all kids, right? That's, that's what we aim for. I also want to share my next update about Hope Squad. Lawrence School is joining the Hope Squad. Kim Mead Walters from Sharing Kindness Foundation applied and received a grant for all expense paid training. Amanda Sample will lead up the Lawrence team. She's a school judgment counselor. So she'll be lead advisor. And then we'll have a team of four teachers, Caitlin Galard, Stephanie Andrade, Dan Perry Kane, and Roy Morse. So the, the training's on February 6th and then we're gonna have a, get our Hope Squad started at Lawrence. So we're excited. That, we talked about that a year ago when we presented the high school and it's happening. So we're excited. Just a brief update on our Belongings series. Henry's gonna give a little information here.
Can I give you just, this is from Angelo. He, he wanted to give like a newsletter and, just so I can pass by. But that was before he left, so just wanted to do that. So for a quick update is we had, we just did our, this past Tuesday, we just did our second installment of the Belongings series. And it was really great. It was, you know, we came together, parents and community members came together and she tried to, to figure out, to learn. Really, it's a basic, basically, we're just learning, how do we make a positive learning environment for students? Students were engaged in difficult conversations. And Dr. Kalise Warner came again and she's just, she's an amazing facilitator. Right away, even though we're gonna engage in this difficult conversation, she said, "Let's make sure we accept our norms. Norms not to win, not to listen to win, not to listen." Can I say double negative? "We don't want to listen to win. We don't want to listen to fix. But our norms is to listen to understand or listen to learn." And I thought that was a great atmosphere to talk about it. We partnered with Desi's Safe Schools and one of their educational consultant, Landon Callahan, came in and he spoke about his personal story. He had a parent from Marblehead to talk about her story. He had a parent from Marblehead to talk about her story. And the stories were all shaped around, how do we, how do we protect? How do we deal with our most vulnerable students? And those are the trans students. And so I learned so much. I went home, this is my, this is my personal story. I go home and tell my wife and go to bed. The next morning goes, "What the heck happened to you last night? You came in excited, talking about all these things." And I just liked learning, you know, like we came back and we're just learning. And I was so blessed to get to understand things that I just didn't know. And so I was excited and I think some other people might be equally excited. What do you think?
Yeah, no, it was, it was a really terrific session. I wasn't able to make the first one, so I was glad to be there for that one and was really moved by the openness of Landon. And I can't remember the mom's name now.
Marblehead mom.
But they're just.
Reese.
Reese, oh, every.
Yeah, I mean, their, their willingness and not just bravery, but like their confidence in just really sharing their stories really openly, open to any questions and, and just there to help a whole community learn and grapple with a difficult conversation in a way that made it feel, I think, a lot less difficult.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was, it was really great.
I was learning. Chris, no, I was thinking Chris might have something. He gave us the names, so that was good. Thanks, Chris.
No problem.
We included at your table, there are some, we printed off some information from Desi about the safe schools. And then Landon shared a wealth of resources. Chris and I were talking about that, or the resources that he would share. I'm going to email this to you because some are videos, some are, so you'll need the links. So I'm going to email.
Thank you.
The, some additional resources for your.
Great.
Our next topic is about literacy. And Sonya, will you give us an update, please?
So earlier in the fall, I had shared information by way of a written update. And then I want to share a little bit more because last week in the governor's state, the Commonwealth address, she partnering with Secretary Patrick Tuttweiler had announced the literacy launch, which is a new effort that they're going to undertake. And they're going to be infusing about $30 million in the FY '25 school year. And part of that is because they want to make sure that Massachusetts is out in front of the efforts in early literacy development. And they want to put the money behind that effort to make sure that every district has what they need. So I have in front of me, because I wanted to give you the exact quote as they were talking about it. "It's going to accelerate the timeline for school districts and early education programs to adopt high-quality literacy materials. And also it's going to provide technical support, coaching, and professional development for educators. In that process, they're going to also update the approval criteria and accelerate review timelines for teacher education programs to require evidence-based early literacy training." In alignment with the science of reading, which I had provided some information about, we've been evaluating our own literacy programming. And then our Title I, as Dr. O'Leary alluded to earlier, our Title I needs assessment that's ongoing with input from families, staff, and admin. And then our own understanding of all the resources currently aligned with the science of reading. We're in a really great position with foundations, which we implemented in the fall of 20, which was good timing and difficult timing, right? When you think about COVID, we needed it, but it was also hard, right? To implement at that time. We have that up through grade three. We've introduced the G O S level readers. And so the piece that we're evaluating right now is the actual core curricular resource, kindergarten to grade three. So this is an opportunity through their guidance and their grant funding to help support that. But it also is really encouraging to see sort of directionally, right? That we're headed that way and we're going to be supported in that timeline. And then along with that, I just wanted to also give a shout out to the work that we do with our elementary literacy manager, Dr. Aaron Castillo, and guiding our reading specialists. Our reading specialists have been bringing informations and field testing and additional screeners to our staffs right now as we're evaluating this process. And to see everything kind of come together, it's a really great opportunity. And then the opportunity to then apply for grant funding is just an added bonus in the process.
So is there anything in this, this announcement for like kindergarten readiness? So for our pre-K kids to have, you know, books in their home and access to preschool and things like that, so that when they, because if we're trying to accelerate literacy, they got to be ready for that.
Yeah, so we're still waiting for all the details, but going through the state of the Commonwealth address and then following like the commissioner's weekly update, right? There are a couple of different pieces about being able to apply for supportive resources. And there's some competitive language about districts that already have, you know, limited early education centers or, you know, can't fulfill the need of their community. So that there's some other pieces to that. But only being a week removed from the address, we've heard about pieces of them. And then we've gotten some little, like little updates, but we're waiting for the comprehensive plan to come out. But it appears that the attention to that early childhood piece is built in there. But right now it's about access to the programming, I think. So the wraparound will hopefully follow. And then also promote, and some of the early responses to the Title I Needs Assessment about resources that we can also exchange with families. Thanks.
All right. I was wondering about resources to not enshake students, particularly because literacy can be a problem. It's not their primary language.
Yeah, I think one of the most exciting things that we've been able to do, and this is partnership with Christine Nicholson, is the Family Engagement Series. I think they just hosted their most recent one last Thursday evening, trying to provide resources. And so we've done a couple of different things where we've tried to provide pair texts, where we provide it in English, but we also provide it in families' preferred language. They're also developing literacy in both languages. We've also worked in Sarah Heinz at Eight Cousins. It's been amazing because one of the things we're trying to do was have some differentiated readers at different levels of language development, but then also trying to find publishers in a variety of different countries. That has not been the easiest task to bring in some of the readers or stories for families because we also want to learn about their cultures with them as we're building the literacy. So we continue to work through that, but that is something that we're looking at. And then also trying to understand, so we just, your focus monitor and your desk, right? And reminding us of our guidelines. So we're also trying to understand where we can present both languages within the school of instruction, right? Because it's open anytime it's outside of instruction and really understanding our parameters. That's actually part of our conversation for learning access advisory, which we think we start next week. So it's something we want to follow up on too. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so our next update, last night started the parent advisory, the grading advisory, sorry. Sonya, you want to give us an update about how that went last night?
Sure, so when it gets late, I talk faster, so let me know. So we had, at our last meeting, had shared that we had put out our announcement in newsletters. We had worked with the principals. And then we were hoping for four parents from each school. And if they had more than four, we'd have that conversation. We didn't receive four from every school. So we had nine parents sign up to be part of the advisory, seven attended last night. We also had a teacher representative, so one from each school, not quite one from each grade, but we have a pretty good range between first and fourth grade. And we started a conversation, really building off of the momentum that we had started last May when we did the family forum. It was also hosted at Mullen Hall last night, happened at the Mullen Hall. Each one of our sessions is going to go to a different elementary school as well. And so we walked through, setting the context and working to have a common understanding so that the next time we get together, starting to work through the questions, developing FAQs and some resource documents. So we're going to be workshopping communications and really working through different layers to understand what families know, need to know, where there might be things that they're hopeful about and where there's reservations so that we can build a comprehensive plan. Then also talking about the work that they're doing and where our educators are in their professional development and trying not to let one thing get ahead of the other where we, you know, might not have an exact answer, but things are coming together. So just trying to take it all together and get a pace going.
You said not four from every school, but is there any school with no parents?
We have one school and we've sent out repeated communications. And that's something that we're open to if a, if a parent were to come up and say, hey, you know, I've heard about it or I understand it better, or I just want to, but the first meeting didn't work. We're open to bringing people.
Are you able to share what much school that is so that we can, as people have connections, try to encourage folks or no?
You can, it's fine. I hate to call out schools, one over another one, but.
I guess not, not, not.
Yeah.
Not asking from a place of trying.
I know, I know that, I know. But I also.
Yeah, just information.
Absolutely. And everyone, you know, that was there last night knew, so.
Yeah. Okay, we're working to bring in. We've also welcomed the president of the L PAC and, of the C PAC. And we are working with the L PAC, the president wasn't able to join. So we're working with Christine and the L PAC board to find a member also to bring the multilingual lens to work.
I think the message here is it's not too late to join.
Right.
At sea point, right? Yes, so if you, yes, encourage anyone, that's great.
Do any school have more than four?
No, we had one school where a fifth person had inquired and someone else had said, "This schedule doesn't work, I actually can't participate." Because we were, we were going to work through that and it just, it resolved itself.
Yeah, because you said two people, two schools, then, then you say nine.
No, just not every school filled all four seats. There was one school that didn't have a family.
And there was one school that had four, but not more than four.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I talk fast and I'm good.
I hear, I hear slowly.
Okay, and then, and then just an update on the chronic absenteeism. So concentrating this, this year, when there was a shift from the state in identifying the attendance priority schools, I want to go back to last year. When the targets were set last year, I want to say that our schools that exceeded their targets and earned all four points that you earn for the exceed in the all-students category was East Falmouth, Mullen Hall, North Falmouth, T Ticket, Morse Pond, Lawrence, and Falmouth High School. Yes, I wanted to say them all out loud because it's all seven schools exceeded in their chronic absentee. So then the game changed this school year. And if we didn't cut our 2022 rate in half, right? Our 2023 rate in half over our 2022, then all of a sudden we are named attendance priority schools. But we met our target. So it, you know, gets a little confusing in that. So I just, I wanted to, to make sure that, to know that we are moving the needle in our schools. And I want to give a shout out to Morse Pond and Lawrence for exceeding their targets in the high needs, low income, low performing, and students with disabilities. And a shout out for Lawrence that exceeded in all nine reported categories. Now, and I say that reported categories because there were opportunities for the elementary, but you don't necessarily meet the minimum N. So we, so we don't know that, right? But I'm, so we're talking about the, where Morse Pond in the high, or Morse Pond up through the high school has the minimum N to be able to do. But Lawrence succeeded on all nine categories. We only had, if you think about all the categories that's reported across all seven schools, there were only four categories across all of our schools that actually declined some. And so I just think that's a, that's a huge acknowledgement. I want to make sure that like, I'm sure, I know we probably shared that last year when we were talking about incast, but now that chronic absenteeism seems to be a topic at the state level, I just wanted to make sure that, that I said that. And then the other concern is that we haven't received our 2024 targets yet. And we're in mid-year this year. So we have no idea what the target's going to be. I will say the promising news here is that Sonya was digging deep into where we are right now with absenteeism. We analyzed the data and if we could stay the same rate that we did in the first semester or the second semester, that most of our schools will be not just below the 2023 target, we will be well below. Now, I know that's tricky and I say that because spring tends to bring a lot of absences. I get that, but I'm, I'm doing another call of action tonight, you know, is that families, if you think about how we got through the first semester, we can do that. We're going to be really on target to, to drop our rates, so. And that's it. I didn't go to 11 o'clock. I was trying.
But you know, Lori, thank you for taking the time with that. And amongst what you said was, in 2022, we did so well and then they changed the formula. That's what makes me so mad about Desi is that they make things dire that aren't dire and they don't give credit. So thank you. I mean, it was tiring, but thank.
I love your honesty.
Moving right along. Routine business, approve the minutes of January 9th, 2024. Is there a motion? Margaret, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Heather. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Chris.
Lumpen, yes.
Derek Medeiros, yes. Welch, yes. Susan, yes. Goldstone, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes. Roll call unanimous, yes. Committee member reports. Terry, I knew it. It's my girl.
Okay, so VIPS, VIPS is kicking off its annual fundraising campaign, which is going to start on February 26th. The highlights of this campaign include they have a new logo and a new website debut and program impacts. And this is one time of the year when VIPS fundraises for its programming expenses. These expenses are not covered by the district budget, but benefit every student throughout the year. Our goal is to encourage staff to donate to this campaign at any amount. And I'm thinking the staff, if, if people put in just a little bit in each school, it adds up, you know? So I will mention this again next meeting because to put it on people's mind. The other committee I want to report on is the Collaborative is holding a legislative breakfast this Friday. I don't know if anybody here is going. Okay. If you still want to go, you can RSVP to Judy Del Rosso at the Cape Cod Collaborative. But they're great. Anybody who's ever been to it, it's great to have the legislators there. Anyway, so think about it. And they promised to talk about local, they don't promise, they always talk about local problems. And that's where you can maybe bring up some of the things you're talking about. Discipline, taken out of our hands or whatever. Anyway, just a plug for that. It's this Friday, it starts at 9:30. It's at Cape Cod Tech, which is the first time I think it's been there. So anyway.
I will tell you two topics that they are bringing up is the special education funding and the pipeline that, because it is a Cape issue of having, it's expensive to move here. And so those are two issues they're going to discuss, open for many more, but those are two.
Any other committee member reports? I just.
That's all right. No worries. Yeah, I just wanted to mention I attended the, on Thursday, the 11th, the film screening of the documentary Resilience. You know, that was organized by Terry Hunter, Terry Alz Hunter of the Falmouth CPAC and presented by Mary Beth Landy of the Federation for Children with Special Needs. And I thought it was an eye-opening documentary. I mean, Terry presented some additional resources that I'm happy to share with you, Melissa, if you want to kind of send it to the rest of the committee. But I, I thought it was really interesting. And Joan was there too. It was nice to see Joan there. And if, I don't know if Joan has anything else to add, but, but yeah, it was, yeah, it was really eye-opening and I'm happy I attended that, so. That's all.
Anything more you want to add?
I agree with Chris, it was fantastic. It talked a lot about childhood, you know, the aces in the impact. And Mary Beth also shared some other resources and a potential other film that may be another, maybe something that the Falmouth CPAC hosts as we move forward.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I just want to mention, getting back to some of the questions that were asked at our last school committee meeting, we have a meeting potentially, I'm like 95% certain, before our next school committee meeting. And it's going. before our next school committee meeting, and it's going to be to answer the questions with a bank of people to help answer those questions that came up during public comment and public comment and emails that we received surrounding the incident at Falmouth High School in December of 2023. Some of the folks that will be on the bank to answer the questions will be the SRO, Dr. Harris, Tom Bushy, Mary Gans, of course, the superintendent. So before our next school committee meeting will be this meeting to answer these specific questions, and it will be its own thing as opposed to having it during a school committee meeting. More details to follow as far as timing and location, yes.
Yeah, two, you mean like same day before?
Yes.
Okay, and open to the public?
Yes.
Okay.
110%.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Any requests for future information? Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Heather, second, myself, and roll call, Chris.
Lumping, yes.
A dusty, yes. Yes. Yep, yep.
Okay, keep going, thank you all. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.